Thank you, and Chris, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call, please.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
President.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
President.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wettstein.
Here.
I want to, before I forget it, call to the attention of the council members here. Write this down, Senate Bill 300. It's in the House now. And Senate Bill 78. We need to contact our former councilman, who's now a state representative, councilperson. The Senate Bill 300 is Housing Development Tiff District. And it works just like an industrial Tiff District in that, once the district is declared and set apart, all the increased property taxes from the improvements goes to the district for sewer, water, streets, everything, and we do not receive any benefit out of it. In a housing district, you're going to have more people, and more people need more services. And we won't be getting any property tax money off that for 20 years. So this is something to talk with Cindy about. And the other one is Senate Bill 78. And I know that the townships really want this. I know that Chad really pushed harder for this. But it changes the language in the, you know, we give the township fire departments a certain amount of the public service lit tax. It changes it from May to Shou. And it'll, the way it looks like, it'll be population-based, which means that probably more than what we're giving them now will come off the top, just like cities and towns do. The cities and towns don't have to give up anything, but it's the county that has to give it up. And we're looking at a bond issue for the jail that needs every penny we can get. So I, it was, it passed overwhelmingly in the Senate. Both of these did. And I'm hoping the House can put the brakes on it. And we just need to tell them from the council's viewpoint. The council meeting that Chris and I was at, the district meeting the other night, they talked about the seriousness of all this, and to please contact your state legislators.
So that's just that one word? We just want to change May to Shou? I mean, Shou, May.
We don't want to change the May to Shou.
Right.
We don't want that to happen.
Right, yeah. Want it to be...
Takes a lot of power away from us, basically.
We want it to be May.
Yeah.
Right.
Keep the decision here.
Another mandate.
I wonder if we could just run a pipeline of the hapless of money? We could just, we might as well just funnel it up.
That's what we're doing already.
Yeah, I mean, we might as well just stop with any of our meetings or anything. We can just let them tell us how to do everything. Oops, said it all out.
All right. New business, approval of minutes. Regular meeting February 2nd. I read them with pleasure. I didn't find any problems at all. I actually got them read in about 20 minutes.
Can I comment? I agree, I read those, and I like the way that Christine has changed the minutes. Much, much easier to read, and still very factual.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Christine, I thank you for not adding all the noise from the car that it was, when I was driving. And I apologize for that.
So a motion's in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rick, and second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero.
Six, zero abstain.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I was absent.
Yeah. Ted abstained. Commissioner's business, juvenile detention, $125,000 additional appropriation.
Good evening. Heather Stenberg, Commissioner's Administrator. The $125,000 is kind of basing off of what we looked at last year. That's out of our control, that the courts make that decision to put, to make placement for juvenile detention, and we are currently based on the, we've already spent the funds that we had appropriated, and we're holding an invoice, and need this appropriation to continue making those payments.
Motion or questions are in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ron to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ted. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? That's all seven of us, seven, zero. Second part of Commissioner's business, 2B, additional appropriation, other services and charges, $275,000 from the public service local income tax.
So that item is for the build-out for the EMS station portion of the new Libert Fire Station. That would gives us a home for the vehicle, as well as quarters for the employees. And as I believe, my understanding is that is a requirement of ours to provide that space to them. So that is that that build-out, that cost, if we do not, if we cannot fund that, then they will increase the rent from $750 a month to $3,500 a month. And I don't know where that, where that would end, and how long that would be. That hasn't been discussed.
Heather, I'm kind of curious, so we'll kind of start at the bottom, but the rent portion of this, if we're, you know, this money's coming from the PSLIT fund. Are we in a contractual obligation to pay rent for something we just paid for?
Well, we're renting from them now, so the rent would cover the expenses, utilities, the maintenance of the building, things like that. If we were to build this building ourselves, we actually did in Chandler several years ago, and it was a $1.5 million building, and, you know, then we maintained that and have kept up on that. This, this is an opportunity for us to have that space and have it managed by someone else at a much smaller cost.
What are we paying for rent on this, anyway?
Well, when it happens, currently, currently $750 at the, at the other station. This is just shifting to the new station.
Is there a contract for that amount rental?
Yes, there is.
And that's for how long?
I don't know how that answer, I know, we have been trying not to do auto-renewing, but I can verify that for you.
There seems odd to pay, I mean, I can understand paying for the cost of the utilities, if we've got a vehicle house there, but that, I really have more, a lot of trouble with that fact. I mean, we have people here in the county, I'm sure, could go down and maintain the quarters for the staff and maintain that facility. I'm pretty sure we've got mechanics and other folks on, on, I mean, I knew we were paying rent, but the fact that we're paying for this build-out, and then, you know, paying close to $350,000, or paying around $350,000 for this, I find that a little odd.
About $275.
$275. What's, what's the matter?
Wow.
$275,000. And they couldn't, I guess they couldn't have found this money anywhere else during, with all of the other PSLIT funds that they received last year? That they received like, one point?
Well, the rest of this, I don't, is that, I don't even know that that being built by those funds. I thought all of this was township money that was building it, and I could be wrong, but that's, that's why this portion is coming out of the PSLIT, is because it is for EMS, which is managed by the, those funds.
You're right, but I mean, the PSLIT...
Yeah, he's saying that we gave that township that extra money, and he's wondering why it couldn't have come out of the extra money we gave them, so.
That's interesting. Guess we'll have to take that up a little later on in the fall as well, as to allocating additional funding there.
Just don't blame me.
Yeah, well, I'm not. I think, you've heard me blame things before, I'm really not at that point. I haven't killed a messenger yet.
So did they just miss budget, the $275 extra, or because of inflation of everything, or what is the reason?
Well, just because the, this is our portion of the building.
Okay.
I mean, we could, that, we're, we're being able to have this portion of the building within their building, so that we don't have to build our own, and this build-out cost, it's just additional. It's not that it wasn't, I mean, they're going to build the building one way or the other.
Right.
But they...
So it's attached to the fire station down there?
It's attached to the fire station.
So it's, it's a big convenience for, for both sides?
For everybody, absolutely.
Any more questions? Motions in order.
This is coming out of the rainy day fund?
No.
No. Public safety lit.
Don't make me smack your wrist.
Oh, no.
That's later on, where they're trying to get it from rainy day funds.
Right.
We're getting there. I'll, yeah, you're okay for now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ron to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any further discussion, questions?
So if we don't do this today, he's automatically going to take the rent to $3,500?
Correct.
And so they must have an idea when his contract with $750 a month is up?
I'm sure they do.
But we don't know that tonight?
I did not bring that with me, I apologize. That wasn't the question I was prepared for.
I mean, I think we're kind of in a rock and hard spot here, but I think we do need to take, remember this.
Yeah.
Money when it comes back in the fall. I think we'll need to take a real hard look at that and, you know, discuss that at that point in time. That's my thoughts. Apparently it's Ron's thoughts as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the reason why I asked a question. I just want to make sure, before we make, I mean, the $750 to $3,500 a month, that's a, that's a huge step, and kind of a, I don't know, I just don't like that big jump, so, anyway. All right, I'm done.
Well, if it helps, I've done the math, and if we made the $3,500 to equal our $275,000, we're at like 80 months, so that's probably...
Seventy-eight, something, yeah.
Yeah. It might be...
I did that math, too.
The terms might be pretty long, so.
Okay, we have a motion by Ron, second by Chris. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? Two. Five, two, and that's Rick Reed and Ted Metzger. Okay. 2C, computer equipment, $173,500 additional appropriation from the Cume Cap, and then the other half of it, $173,500 from the Rainy Day. We're replacing all the computers over a period of two years or three.
Three years, yeah.
Three years.
So, yeah, so Guy has acknowledged the fact that we have a large number of our computers that are not Windows 11 compatible, and anything below Windows 11 will not be supported after October 2025. So he has developed a, kind of a rotating list of these ones, you know, are the ultimate worst right now, we need to get them changed, and then he's kind of tiered them down from there, hoping then, that once we get a rotation like this going, his computers are about a five-year lifespan anyway, that we can kind of keep that moving, that we would just start to replace computers every five years. This, this number that I provided, though, was like worst-case scenario for this first round, I think I added to that email that I sent Crystal. The quote that we got from Keller Schrader had a maximum number of hours it would take them to make the setup. It likely won't, I'm going to say it won't, but I'm going to say likely instead, because I don't ever want to be caught with that, but it wouldn't take that amount of time. And we are also in the process of vetting some other options, doing some Dell Managed Services, where they can sell us the product directly. They will build the computer, they will put it in place, and they will manage it for four years, and then we can start that rotation with them, instead of using a vendor who's going to up-charge us on all those.
Heather, do we have people that are working onsite and also working remote? Or do we have anybody working remote?
I believe there are still people working remote on occasion. I don't think it's happening as a continual thing.
But I was just wondering, are that, and I just, I would have asked this earlier, if I would have thought about it, but are they working here onsite on a workstation, and then they have a laptop they're taking home? Or are they just remoting it from home on a home PC?
No, we don't let anybody put a home PC into our system, so that, that, it's always going to be something that's been issued by Guy.
So we might just have some that we lease out on the, or not lease out.
Yeah, that are just available in the departments.
So we don't have anybody like you, you wouldn't be working up here, and then you've got another computer here taken home.
No, sir.
On a continual basis.
Yeah.
And then let me ask you another question here. Why was this not budgeted through the ARPA funds?
It was something that came up, but there, with the long list of items that were in there, and the high dollars and some of the other items, I can't, can't speak to why the commissioners didn't select it, but we, I mean, we spent some funds on some other items that they felt maybe this one we could fund in another way.
Yeah, and the one I'm really curious about, I mean, that just pops to my head, is a half a million dollar rebranding through Edit Funds to rebrand Work County, that's something, something different, apparently. And then we're supposed to take this money out of Rainy Day and Cume Cap to pay for that. Once again, I won't annihilate the messenger, but I'm very concerned about that, how that was not deemed, I would have thought that this, you know, something like this would have been more important, and wouldn't necessarily, needed to come out of Rainy Day Funds, when there was money from the ARPA available to do that, so, kind of curious about that.
Well, I do wish that Steve was here to speak to the rebranding. He has a passion for getting some new signage, some new information out there, and updating logos, and those sorts of things.
I've got a concern, I've got a real passion for the Rainy Day Fund. And, and kind of wondering how that, you know, the difference between those two, you know, like when the proverbial one thing hits the fan, how, you know, that maybe this isn't hit the fan top there, but, all right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Cume Cap appropriation by itself of $700, $173,500.
Okay, a motion by Ted, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. And that's just to approve only the Cume Cap portion of $173,500.
Correct.
Any further questions or discussions on that motion?
I have a question, will that, will that cover the expenses? Is that...
No.
Not, not based on that Keller Schrader quote, but again, like I said, we are exploring other options, and that Keller Schrader quote was, of course, the worst-case scenario time-wise, and that's, that, that's why I use that number, because it is a worst-case scenario. I, I will, we will do our best to work within that, if that's what the council decides.
I mean, I understand, like Brad's concerned about Rainy Day, certainly do, and everything, and then I also can see where computers are pretty essential, so I could, I can put them in a Rainy Day in my own mind, almost like a critical item. So I don't want to short it, you know, but...
My, my request, you know, was based on, you know, talking with commissioners and talking with Crystal, but the, the full amount could come from Cume Cap just as easily, as far as I'm concerned, so that's...
Is that a motion?
No, I'm just saying that, I, I, it doesn't bother me where it comes from, so long as we have the money to do what we need to do.
I have a little input, if you don't mind.
No, feel free.
I was a little worried this might happen. I don't know why, but I did advertise the full amount out of Cume Cap, so if that's something that you decide to do, it has been advertised that way, for the full $347,000. But I also advertised the full $347,000 out of Rainy Day, just to cover this whole scenario. Okay, so.
But we could approve the $173,500 tonight, and then they would only have to come back next month for it?
No, they don't have to come back. If you want to make it all out of Cume Cap, I advertised it at $347,000, so you could approve.
Oh, you did.
I did.
You can change your motion.
You can amend your motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll amend my motion for it to all come out of Cume, Cume, Cume Cap.
And I'll second that again.
Okay. So the motion now stands, made by Ted Metzger and seconded by Rick Reed, that instead of $173,500 coming from Cume Cap, and $173,500 coming from Rainy Day, we're taking all $347,000 of it from Cume Cap. It would be zero from Rainy Day. Is the motion clear enough?
Yes. Sounds good to me.
All right, all those in favor?
Is there any more discussion?
Oh, okay.
Let me ask you about what's left allocated out of Cume Cap? I mean, what's like unspoken, or...
Are the cash balance, or...
Yeah.
It's like two point, I've got it.
2.2 million, or 2.4 million in Cume Cap, cash balance.
Okay, so Cume Cap is 2.7. Now, that doesn't count their budget, but 2.7. And Rainy Day...
Two, I think.
Is 2.2.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the $347,000 coming out of Cume Cap? Raise your hand. At six. And opposed? Two. Six.
I think five.
Five to two, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Five, two, and the two were Brad and Rob.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Health Department business, local health trust fund, mosquito distribution, $28,800 additional appropriation.
There's plenty of money in there, and it's a, you know, it's the grant trust fund, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron?
We don't need any more mosquitoes.
No, we don't.
Don't bother me.
Any discussion?
Some people are like better than us, Ted.
All those in favor? At seven, zero. Public defender business, additional appropriation, public defender legal services, $60,000. And then there's a transfer, part-time, $20,000 from that, to operating expense, $20,000.
Before, before he starts, I just want to clarify that the transfer needs to be $15,000.
Okay.
Because I checked today, and there wasn't $20,000 budgeted, so it needs to be 15.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Warren Mathias, the chief public defender, and the transfer from the part-time fund to our operating fund is, would enable us to pay outstanding murder appeals that have been unpaid since last June. It's for the Baumgartner and Wolf murder trials. The way our criminal justice system works, when you have a murder case, and you have indigent, well, whether it's indigent or not, the stakes are so high, they're almost always appealed, and in, in our county, in this case, they both were. The good news is, unlike the past, we capped the amount they could charge, and negotiated with various lawyers around the area, and one as far away as Terre Haute, and we were able to, to get both of those capped at $10,000 each. We just didn't have the line item, I was assuming we could use part-time as something to pay for a part-time appeals lawyer to do, but that, that line item, part-time, is supposed to be used for actual, on-the-ground staff. I didn't know that. So I would ask that you consider transferring the money that's in our part-time line item into our operating account, and then, then we'll ask that that be paid, and those lawyers get paid for their services. They've been kind, and understanding in the fact that we would eventually get them paid, so I just feel a little bad for not getting it done quicker for them. And then the next line, the next question, which is a little different, it's more along the same vein of issues we have. We have, we've asked for a line item to be created for outside legal and documents, so we wouldn't have this problem, so in the future, we can put money in there for these appeals. We currently have in our pipeline, one, two, three, four outstanding appeals. With each of those appeals, also comes a transcript that needs to be typed, and by statute, we have to pay $4.50 a page when the transcript of the court proceeding is typed up. That's a state statute number. Those numbers can range anywhere between $1,000 to up to $2,000 per case, and so there's $5,000 that we know is coming. The appeals on these, they're not murders, two are child in need of services cases. One is a child molester case, that we've already done the appeal, and the case was overturned, part of it was overturned, but we still owe that lawyer. And then we had a unique situation where we had one child services case, I never thought this would happen, but we didn't have enough lawyers for the case. Everybody was conflicted out, or we hired, we, we made every lawyer that's on our contract take, take a case, and there's still one dad left that we had to find a lawyer for, so we were able to hire a lawyer to do that. There's $4,200 that'll be coming for that Chin's case, because we didn't have enough lawyers in the county to take the conflict. You can't have a lawyer do represent two dads, for instance, and this household had three different dads, and it was really a strange situation. I've never seen it happen. So that was another thing that's outstanding. And then there was one, one case that I believe is going to be close to $5,000 that's coming. The appeal has not been written, but that involves a level-five felony. So for those reasons, I'm asking the, the council to appropriate an additional appropriation for us into that additional legal document and, and legal fund that we would create, so we can properly do this in the future. I can answer a ton of questions for, for you all about it, and go into great detail. I'm prepared for that. But before I do, I wanted to say, we brought back over $2,000 from the state for you all to the general fund by getting reimbursement money. So by you creating the, or the commissioners creating the office and putting us here, we're starting to bird-dog those things and get grant money and reimbursement money. We captured some federal dollars, about $3,000 last year. We're going to attack and go after, there's, our county's allocated about $1.2 million in opioid money that's going to be coming, so we're going to try and get some of that. So we're going to continue to do our job to pay back the general fund if we can. We're one of those unique agencies or departments that can find money sometimes, so.
If you can't find it, it's probably up in Indianapolis somewhere.
That's where it's at, that's where I'm getting it from.
It's probably up there.
I keep knocking on their door.
I'll drive you up there, maybe we can spend a weekend looking around.
Love to.
I'll go sit on the weekend, look over the pipeline.
We might find more, we can just write our check.
As I say, we probably could, I think.
Good possibility.
Can it, so are we transferring from the part-time and from the operating to legal services?
No, no, no. The, the legal services is an additional appropriation.
Okay, so that's an additional.
And then the transfer is from part-time to operating.
From part-time to the operating, you know?
Oh, I see, I have from, I'm sorry, I confused you.
That's okay.
It should say two.
I'm old, I'm not as old as some people that might be on this board, but I'm getting there.
So the $60,000 is to create a new line item called outside legal and documents, and that's going to fund you through the rest of the year?
It should, for all of our appeals and documents that we know are coming in the pipeline.
Okay.
And I'm going to work my butt off to make sure. I would like to have, maybe, I think, I think I may have overshot it by $5,000 on my prediction, but I know what's in the pipeline.
Yeah.
There could be something really strange happen, but based upon how the timing goes, I'll know in June or July if we've got a new appeal, and then I would try and roll that into the next year, you know, standing on the calendar, balancing between two years. I, I know it's going to take a while for lawyers to get the appeal done.
Right.
So as long as I know by June, if anything, I should know if we'll meet that budget perfectly by June, so.
So you had nothing for this, this is a new line item, and Warren, and you didn't have it, there wasn't, where were you paying for this?
Well, I'd assumed that I could take it out of part-time.
That's where you thought, yeah, for the legal services.
Right.
That's where...
Because I, in my mind, I thought that's what that meant, but I was wrong.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Well, no, but I meant the 60s not being transferred from the...
No, there's only 15 in the part-time, so there's not enough to cover what he's needing.
Yeah, he's needing 60s, so we're only transferring 15, so he's needing an extra third.
Well, no, 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 the, those are two kind of different things that he just explained.
Okay, so the 60s all by itself, out here on an island?
Has nothing to do with the 15.
Okay, and so the 60s coming straight out of county? Okay, and so the sixty's coming straight out of County General, then?
Yes. And then the fifteen is coming from its own budget, just line to line.
Right, so what were you, how were you covering those costs for, that are going to be covered by that legal services line item then last year?
Last year out of part-time.
You were just covering that.
They're usually, I, I think, you guys would know better than I, but I think you guys put, and we asked for twenty thousand for that part-time every year, and we didn't pay the murders last year, so I, and I didn't, I don't think I could encumber it, but I think we left it there last year, didn't pay those two murder cases.
And the hint, it got reduced, I believe.
And then, so.
Okay, so that's, I was just wondering why this all is coming up here in February and not earlier, last year before budget times. Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is by Brad to approve and seconded by Ted, was it?
Right.
Rick, okay. I came from that way. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Including the old guy.
So it's all seven out of seven, seven zero.
I was trying to backroom the person on your left over there with shoes.
Superior Court One Business, uh, additional appropriation of five thousand dollars for an interpreter, and then there's the Salary Ordinance for Training, Probation Officer, three weeks of training for a new probation officer, four thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Um, Judge Win, um, sorry, Judge Wyberg sends her regret she didn't intend to come tonight, but she had a vehicle issue she had to take care of, so I'm here in her place. She doesn't intend to come and introduce herself, she is, she's been with us since November twenty-eighth as a judge of Superior One. Um, the request for the funds for the interpreter, we've been operating out of a grant, which has held us well till now, but I believe the grant's down to about six hundred dollars. And so now that we have this Mandarin case, um, originally the trial was scheduled for March tenth, I checked this morning on the docket, it's been continued till, um, June second, but it's still going to happen, the state has asked for some additional time to talk to some witnesses. So, um, we, as you see the attachment that I had sent, um, the only Mandarin interpreter we could find anywhere near here that was willing to come, um, estimated it to be one thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, that does not include any, uh, if they were found guilty at the bench trial and needed additional sentencing, um, some, for them to come back, so, um, we're just asking for that line item to be funded with some money for those purposes.
And the Salary Ordinance, the Salary Ordinance only, no appropriation is needed for that.
Right, we're just asking for our new probation officer, our, our current one is retiring at the end of March, she's been with the county thirty-six and a half years, so we do have a, a candidate who we've, uh, made the offer of him to come with us, and she's accepted, she is available to start on the thirteenth, and we give her three weeks with the probation officer. There are so many facets of that job that three weeks is barely a drop in the bucket, but, um, the main, the main reason we need to get her in there is the first time for Indiana Probation Officer Orientation is April second, and so she has to, um, we want the person to get in there and have that orientation, but she has to complete modules before then, so she has to go online and watch videos and take some testing kind of things before she qualifies for that orientation. If she doesn't get it in April, she, the next one isn't until October, and so in, she has to complete, in the first six months of her employment, um, she has to pass the probation officer test, so essentially she would be passing the test before she's had orientation, so we're just really trying to fast-track that. We have the money, I ran the numbers, even with Nancy's, Sue's payout, there's still money to cover both, we just like to pay, um, both, uh, the new person and Nancy for those three weeks.
Five A and five B.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brad to approve five A and five B, and it's seconded by Rick. And do me a favor and tell me your name again, so I can write.
I'm sorry, Ellen Sprinkle, I'm the Court Administrator, Office Administrator, jury minister.
That's why you look so familiar, I was kept trying to.
Yeah, you're my neighbor.
It was like, gosh.
And that motion is to approve both A and B, the five thousand dollar interpreter, additional appropriation, and the Salary Ordinance of four thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and one against. Okay, Ted Metzger is a nay.
Are you still on the same spot?
No.
Nope, you're not down there either?
No, it's been a while.
We drive everyone, so I will drive through there, and we're like, somebody's wondering this a little bit.
The next is six A, six B, six C, six D, six E, and six F, six G, six H.
Motion to approve.
All of these, I have to read them, sorry.
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I don't have to.
I'll second it, I have to.
Okay.
I trust that man.
A motion by Brad and seconded by Ted to approve six A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Been wanting to do that for a long time.
Okay, any discussion?
Been here long enough, you should have been.
Alls in favor? Seven zero. And then the, uh, come, encumbrance resolution, that'd be twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. The Resolution of the County Council of Warren County, Indiana, approving encumbrances from the two-oh-two-two fiscal year.
Motion.
Second by Ted, second, is that Rob?
That's Brad.
Brad, okay.
You sound on the fifty.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. And then the, uh, last item just came in, didn't it? Let's see, uh, truck driver, Highway Department Truck Driver. I'll wait for Crystal.
I'm sorry, what?
It was the Highway Department something?
Oh, yes.
The Salary Ordinance.
Salary Ordinance, yeah.
Uh, there's a Salary Ordinance for Truck Driver retiring, uh, the payout, the Salary Ordinance is two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Twenty-one, twenty-six, eighty-seven. Okay, is there a motion for this?
Yes, there is.
I don't know who was first, I'll put it on Brad.
Ted.
Who sec, who seconds it?
I do.
Uh, okay, you want Ted to be first. Ted motion, Brad second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? All right, seven zero.
You're the one asking me questions tonight, you're the.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm not in a hurry.
Anything else to come before the council?
Yes.
No public.
Nobody, no.
All right.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Alls in favor? Seven zero.
Maybe we'll, maybe we can rebrand, uh, rebrand my road or something.